All stands for pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no review and justice for all.
And excuse me.
The other?
Eric.
Chapman?
Eric.
Sorry.
Here.
Yep. Here. And accept a motion to approve the agenda of March thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, as presented.
I'll make that motion.
What's that? Motion by Clark, seconded by Chapman, and I would like to make a couple changes to that. First, you have to give what you do. And, under action items, we need to add an item E, which is to appoint Kelly Young to the DDA. And on item F, I'll have it as an action item, but may truly not become an action item, but recommendations on void organs. And I would accept the motion to approve the agenda of March thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, as amended.
I'll make that motion.
For. More by Clark. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. I would accept the motion to approve the minutes of the February thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, regular board meeting. Motion by Chapman.
Support.
Word right there. All in favor? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Pass. Accept the motion to approve the minutes of the February thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Bodley. Seconded by Chapman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That should be passed. And I would accept the motion to approve the minutes of the February twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, public comment meeting. Motion by Chapman. Support by Bodley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Any public comment? Yes?
My name is Jennifer and I have a question on my water bill. Frank and I have rented a house on West Street for five years because of food and salad. And we had a renter there, we only had two renters, one lived there a year, one's lived there for four years. He moved out and didn't pay all his bills. He ended up with a high water bill of two hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents, and I was told that it was my bill now, not his, but it was in his name for four years. I was told that it is not going to go on my village taxes, which I was unaware. I asked why did they not shut off the water, or if they didn't, why didn't they tell me? And I could have gone after him for the money, you know, or paid it as I went along, instead of ending up with this high water bill. I called consumers and DTE, and they have the same problem, but they do not go after the homeowner. They do go after the renter. And so it is, you know, the homeowner's problem. I was told it was my problem because I own the home. So I don't want to be paying for somebody else's water bill, especially that high, because we just can't afford that. So I was asking, I was told that it was decided by the law that instead of shutting water off, you were going to put it on the village taxes of people, but with no notification that you were going to do that, for that's the way it is for people who are landlords. And I don't think this is up here on here.
You know, that's just, that's been the policy forever. I, I, I'm surprised that consumers doesn't, because consumers is always at, I know, attached utility bills to the residents. When you, when you, when you go buy a home, you assume all the bills of the home, the past bills. I mean, we're, to be frank, we're, we're just not renters, we're not landlords, you know, and we, the water is sold to that, there has to be a deposit paid to put it in the renter's name.
It was in his name for four years. He had been paying on it, been paying a little here, a little there, so that, you know, maybe he was afraid that they were going to shut the water. I did not know you didn't shut the water off anymore. I don't know how long ago that was.
Then how, we, we, have we, then I know, have we ever shut off water bills as soon as they become past due?
I just assume that's what you do, or notify, you know, you notified him that it wasn't being paid, but you did not notify me, and I don't see where it falls back on the land or on the homeowner.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Ms. Berlin, you are the landlord of the West Street address.
Yes, I am.
And the water bill was in the renter's name?
For four years.
So then you got a bill for that address with your name on it?
Correct. And I want to tell you that when he had left...
So, somebody switched then that address's billing from there at, from...
Yes.
It sounds like somebody fraudulently went into the village and told them to switch out the name on the water bill.
No.
Because it doesn't just go back to your name.
No.
What prompted the switch?
When he left in November, and I called and said, "He's gone, I will put this back in my name, this house."
Unbeknownst to you that there was a...
Unbeknownst to me.
Two hundred forty-seven dollar water bill.
This bill did not come in until a month later.
Then it's probably, if I can speak for you, I suppose I should, but, so now the security positive had been returned and everything else, and you've cut ties with this individual?
He cut us off too.
Okay.
He was us. I just felt that he was the user on the water, he's the one who had access to it. It was in his name at the time he was using it. And I, you know, if there was a rule or a law, then I should have been notified that it's going to, you know, that it was behind and rears, and I should have at least told that. I picked that up or made him pay for it.
I think she should have paid it. She's apparently obviously not willing to do. I think we should just, something to help her. I'm not the kind of renter that can we bill him doing, or is that, you must have sent this on file someplace?
Well, unfortunately, he didn't pay it from the first place, and our recourse of action is to attach it to the tax billing, which would be the landowner.
Right.
Unfortunately, we don't have a way to go through every time and say, "Are you running your property? Are you not running your property?"
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, Rachel would have a hard time, or our clerk would have a hard time calling everybody, asking, "Are you a renter or are you running it this time?" So we've got to kind of do a broad type of program here that just puts the billing out there, I think, that's what we decided on two years ago when we adopted the actual application for the renter to sign with the deposit.
We didn't adopt it, that's state statute.
Oh, okay. Well, that's, I seen that, I can talk about that.
So the landlord is not, they're held responsible, they have to notify the village in writing that the tenant's responsible for paying a cash deposit and secondly, the bill, that's what we said, a cash deposit of two hundred dollars.
How is this known knowledge to the renters?
We're, I mean, I'm not trying to be rude, but we're not the renters, and I'm not going to sit here and assume the landlord's responsibilities.
I'm not saying you are the renters, I'm saying, why are you not notifying the renters? There are many renters in this town. Why have you not been informed through either the table or through an article that you changed the law two years ago?
We didn't change the law, the law's been here for a long time.
Well, then you set a law in motion.
We, no, no, we, we set our, we reset our cash deposit at two hundred dollars.
Did you give cash deposit from this tenant?
We were never notified in writing that the tenant was made responsible for the water bill.
He was there for four years.
That's not, that's what I'm saying, that's not our responsibility as a builder.
Who notifies you then? Who notifies you?
You're the landlord, you're the rent, you, to me, it's your responsibility to check on these people, you are the landlord.
And how would I have known to do that?
I'm not a landlord, that's what I'm saying, I'm not going to assume landlord's responsibilities. I'm not as, as the village or the council who's going to assume the landlord's responsibilities.
But your tax is making or giving me this bill, but you're not informing me that that's what I should have done, was to inform the village that he is a tenant and that he is the, the water bill is being responsible for and with the two hundred dollars. You, I don't, who knows that?
I guess I don't know what you're asking, because we, I, in my personal opinion, we're not going to go through the village and find out every home that's rented and contact the landlords and have a conversation with them. That's not our responsibility.
Who says that?
The landlords. You chose to be a landlord, you chose to be in the rental business.
So it's my responsibility?
I mean, I'm not trying to be mean, I'm just telling you, I see it in my way. I understand what you're saying too.
Is it my responsibility that he used the water?
Yes, as is landlord, yes. That's my personal opinion, if you're asking my personal opinion. If, if, is there any other opinion?
Well, I think... It's definitely a landlord-tenant dispute.
Yes.
I'm trying to look at another situation. Cable were the same thing, this individual didn't pay the cable bill, and the landlord got a bill for that, that still becomes a landlord-tenant dispute.
And the cable company would disconnect the cable, and they would not turn it on until the bill was paid. It's like the electric company used to be, or the gas company used to be.
Then why isn't the water being, then why isn't the water being turned on?
If you'd like us to turn it off, you could, you'll pay a fee for having it turned off then. I, I'm just trying to get through this word out.
I'm saying, he wasn't paying, he was paying a little here, a little there, he could justify to that. He was never paying full bill.
Sounds like he was very aware of what he was going to do.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
That's a shame.
You know, but if consumers and DTE can do that, where, you know, they wouldn't, they didn't tell, hold be responsible for what he owes them, it makes sense.
I mean, look at this wrong, but I think in, in this aspect of us, we're billing the landowner, and it would be the landowner's responsibility to go after the tenant in, say, civil court or something like that. So I guess, and in that aspect, yes, you are responsible for the water bill, in my opinion, and it would be your responsibility to go after the tenant in a civil suit, would be my, well, time. And, I mean, it's unfortunate, and I feel for you, and I understand where you're coming from, but...
Totally, I'm not, I'm just looking at it from the village perspective too.
Well, thank you for your time.
Him has a different opinion, I'm not, I'm not, I'm...
It's unfortunate, it's unfortunate.
Small things we admit, though.
Any other public comment? Please report, Scott.
Thank you. Hopefully everybody had a chance to look at the report. It's still a month, but it's starting to pick up a little bit. A little bit of training, we've had the issue of light, I think that will come a little bit later, as far as not only the meeting, but the meeting that Ken and I had with Brian Graham that went pretty well, I think. One of the things on the file here, I'll kind of explain it, it doesn't really make much sense, maybe the last one's the car show. They do it a little bit different now, where we have to actually do it via online, which is kind of a key, but I had it all ready to go, ready to mail out, I just double-checked with Traverse City to make sure that we had to send it to them, they're like, "Oh, no, 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 you got to mail it," or do it through the website. So I went through that whole process, and all it did is, is, gives us an actual number that we have, but then we have to go in four weeks, and we have to actually call again to actually get the go-ahead to go. So even though we've filled out everything we can, and we've asked for permission to close the roads, it kind of stays a little until about four weeks prior to the incident, so, but they assured me that it shouldn't be a problem four weeks prior to, and I said, you know, if we have to wait four weeks, and then all of a sudden it helps, we can't do it, but that's just the way they operate, I'm not sure why. So, the answer to the question is that permit's been filed and requested, but it's just that it really did one hundred percent approve.
Do, do they approve it when you send it in, and then it's just like a follow-up thing?
No, and I don't know.
And they, when we call four weeks, they, they, "No, you can't shut it down."
You're right, they couldn't, that's what my question to her was, "Well, what's going to happen in four weeks if you tell me I can't?" You know? So, but she assured us that wouldn't be a problem, so. And I don't know whether they do it just to keep things fresh in the mind, because if they don't, then how do they put things on back burner, bring it back up to remember or whatever? So, it's them taking care of it, and what I did this year, a little bit different, is we did one also for the Fourth of July parade, which we actually should have been doing along, along too, so. We have one number for the whole year, and we could actually pull the different little permits whenever we need it, whether it's car show, whether it's a parade or whatever, so. So, and hopefully that explains it, but I don't know how else to explain it, so. Any other question? Scott?
Sam?
Very simple report, you know, most of your time out in there, I think, pretty much dealing with frozen water lines. Today, we had fifty-five complaints of frozen water. We've got twelve water services pros under the road. To the best of my knowledge, nobody is without water in town. One way or another, we've got no water. And that's been my, pretty much, the last six weeks, people, I mean, we, oh, subject, I even got wastewater in my smokes. And that's unheard of, fifty-two degrees sitting in a subject tank, and it's freezing because they're not using enough water to move it over a period of time, so it freezes. So then we're putting portable pumps in, we're pumping them from one tank to another tank, from one tank, from that tank up to the next station, to keep the sanitary, so we don't have to worry about anybody's running over, you know, to keep the cost down, so blooms in the forest are not pumping all the time. Any questions?
Ready for spring?
No.
Me neither.
We have a lot of wish in winter to stay here. I guess, Scott.
When they fall, we're going to, we're going to find out. How, how many?
We have water spring everywhere.
How many do we have on garden hose right now, do you know?
No.
The snowblower on the Kubota is, is terrible.
We've got it all tore apart, we just haven't, we're going to do is pull the old one out of the, out of the pole barn, Rob Tyler saw it, it was in pretty rough shape. We're going to pull the old one out of the pole barn, see if we can improvise parts and make two out of one. And at that point, I'll get with you, huh? Yeah, make one out of two, excuse me, I said two out of one. And Joe, I'll answer your question, boy.
Any other questions for Sam? Thank you, Sam. Before I go to correspondence, I, I keep thinking about your next thing, I just, I want to clear it up, so it's in my mind. Who, who is the water bill going to?
His name was getting a little...
If it was in his name, going to that address, now see where I get confused, because apparently at some point, I think somebody, maybe did something they shouldn't know. Am I correct in assuming that the water bill should always go to the landowner's name and address, like on a tax roll? Does, does that make sense? Now, when they come in, they, in the water, your name is on that piece of property.
Yes.
Right. So I mean, the way my mind keeps thinking this, that's where the water should have been billed to. In her name, to her. If they would have came in and said, "We'd like to put that in, in somebody else's name to the renter's..." Then we should say, "Noah," or you should say, "No, you're not the owner of that property."
You changed it two years ago, she had it there four years ago, so...
He would have had that.
Yeah.
No, what I'm saying is, well...
Currently, that's the way it should be, but if she rented it four years ago...
It always should have been now.
Well, just like power, if I go rent a house, I call, and they put that power in my name. They don't ask me if I own the house or not, they just put power in my name and bill me.
You know, each rent...
But then at that point, the landlord would realize, "I'm not getting a bill for that property anymore, I should," you know what I'm saying? I see where there's some confusion here, I really can't, I'm just trying to be really fair about this.
See, we've never heard before. This is the first time, because we couldn't sell the home, but you're right, each letter does it different. One, if we ask them to pay the water gas and the electric and water, and...
Remember, the house by Harster earlier, cable, electric, gas, water.
Should we make it, the, the landlord, to stop this kind of confusion in the future?
Well, we did change that two years ago, but it's...
If it goes to the landlord, I would have then known that he wasn't paying that, even though that was in his contract to pay it.
Right.
Then I could have done something, yes. It might be a very good, feasible idea to go ahead and give it to the landlord and tell him that's why, but even though they are paying, he should pay that in this rent, and...
I'm just trying to... Short all, remember that one.
So is this statement true then? Four years ago, the renter, or you, the landlord, switched out the name on the water bill?
Yes.
I would say that the best way to approach this now, then, would be if the water bill is not paid by the vendor, notify the owner immediately.
Oh, we're going to know if the rental or not, running weird.
Well, I'm sure you...
We could, I mean, yeah, if you had a lot of work in...
There's so many summer rentals up there.
Well, that's true, still. Well, he's not a rent, he's not a summer rental, he was a four-year one. Okay.
Yeah, can we get back to, can we talk about it later, Dave, seriously, so we don't waste everybody's time, though? And I can understand some confusion and the issue, and I, I think we all want to be fair about it.
Absolutely.
The right solution?
Yeah.
Okay, you shouldn't have to pay it.
We're very well out of trouble here, we're not...
We try real hard, this is where we get caught in the middle, we try real hard not to shut people's water off, you know, but now we're kind of...
Do you have your money now?
Shut them slow. Let, let us, nice, kick it around, seriously, come up with it. I can understand that confusion on both ends, and we have to come up with something that is clear for everybody.
Yeah, you might, even if it's not for me this time, you might want to make it better for somebody else.
Because I know we do have some landlords, and they know it, and they, they literally know if it's not paid, they demand it paid right now, but...
Yeah, but see, I had no idea.
We will, we will kick it around amongst our, well, yes.
If you're going to address that issue, you might also consider a situation where somebody starts buying on land contract, and that land contract might not be recorded, and in some cases, the land contract purchaser will go in and notify the local government that they are purchasing the property, but not all that stuff would show up the registered deeds or on the tax bill, so if you're going to address that issue, you might want to consider, and suppose land contract purchaser defaults, and then the original owner takes the property back. I'm not telling you how to do it, but something you might consider, although lots of different scenarios might exist.
Because we do get the option, like the electric company does, and we can put it on the tax bill, so there's probably certain responsibilities that come along with that too. Like, maybe we should make sure we're truly billing it to the person that pays the taxes, unless we're notified otherwise by the person paying the taxes.
And we have the deposit.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, but then we need to follow that up with the deposit.
Yeah, see, this is...
So we're...
Four years back and on, and you got, you got caught in the middle of a...
Two years ago, we fixed that that way, but...
Yeah, so...
We didn't do a good job of notifying everybody, I guess.
We will. We probably want to make a...
Thank you.
A conclusion, right? I don't want some kind of crying on the...
I can't find him, but I...
Oh, you will, you, you will find him.
I think what we have in place now is...
It is, but we can't.
We may need to advertise.
Only you mentioned two. We, we, you've got a two hundred dollar deposit, once they've exceeded that two hundred dollar deposit, we may have got to shut them off or...
We will, we, that, it says that earlier, it will be shut off, we'll take the two hundred dollars, but that doesn't fix what happened with her over the last four years, so, we will come up with something that makes us all happy, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Now I just have to think of that. Correspondents. This is a, from State of Michigan Public Service Commission, a notice of hearing for DTE Gas Company. For Michigan Solidated Gas Company Main Renewal Program, Meter Moveout Program, and Pipeline Integrity Program during two thousand and thirteen, and confirm that the infrastructure recovery mechanism surcharge shall begin on July first, two thousand and fourteen. Anybody would like to go to the first public hearing on that matter, it will be March twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, at ten a.m. at the Constitutional Hall in Lansing. Mark, take it on. Community growth grant. Last year, they called it Deplacementing Grant, and we talked about it, about kayak stations and things like that. I can pass this out if anybody wants it. My personal opinion is that until we get through the grant, or and we don't really, this is just, this was like a fifty percent match, and we thought, we really need to concentrate on the grant we have until we figure out our cost on that, without moving forward. So, if anybody has a different opinion, they're due by March twenty-first, and I, I just personally think it's something we should just not pursue this year, it's, it's, it's up to seventy-five hundred dollars, it'd be a three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollar match, probably, that's the way it was last year, even be considered for the grant. I think it's a great grant, but I think we have a lot bigger projects to concentrate on right now with our limited finances. Is everybody okay with that? The DDA has a main street train, and they're looking for people that might want to go with them. They, they have to attend two events a year. This one is being held out in Blissfield, which is Adrian area.
South of the area.
It is on Wednesday, April sixteenth. This Corbett has agreed that at one p.m., correct me if I'm getting this wrong, this evening, one p.m. on Tuesday, the fifteenth, he will supply the bus, all the transportation expenses, everything, to go down to Detroit Tigers game that night, which he has bought tickets for, right, fourteen tickets. So all the cost, anybody who wants to attend is, is, there's three room rates, seventy-two, eighty, and ninety-nine, once the fourteen that want to go decide, they can discuss amongst themselves which one they want to stay at. So if anybody's interested in going, it's Wednesday, it'll be Tuesday, April fifteenth, leaving at one and returning Wednesday, April sixteenth.
After the training goes from nine to four, so we'd be home by probably, I don't know, nine.
Yeah. Anybody interested to get ahold of Melissa? Okay. Thank you. The other one is Northern Lakes Economic Alliance Luncheon, which is a lot mine.
Auburn's a lot.
Yep. Well, actually, that is coming up on Friday, April eleventh. It's at the North Central Michigan College this year, at eleven-thirty to one-thirty. Governor Snyder is going to be the keynote speaker, I think, the, the village reserved a table of eight. Right now, I think they're, I'll be invited, someone from the DDA, the Planning Commission, and the Chamber to go, so I believe right now there are one, two, three, four seats, definitely spoken for, I don't think Patty Mills is going for the Chamber now. So if anybody from the council would like to go, I, I kind of need to know after the meeting tonight, because they're looking for names tomorrow, so. We'll fill the table, so you don't feel obligated, but it'd be great if somebody wanted to go. Friday, April eleventh. So after the meeting, get ahold of me, if you have your schedule?
I, I'm looking right now, I'm supposed to work, but I have to call the guy and see if I can slot somebody to go, but...
Okay. We'll talk about it, you mean?
Yeah, I'll get them.
Okay, and then I can let some others know that want to go, so we fill the table a day, I don't think that'll be a problem.
Where is that at?
Where is that? North Central Michigan College, up in Petoskey. She knows a nice, it's a nice place to have all that. It was just, it was, it was a nice venue, because a lot of these seven hundred people are sold out, so.
It's sure to be packed, I'm sure it's going to be packed.
Other than that, I have no other course time, so anybody else have, any of them?
No.
Okay, we will move on. Committee reports, Rob, Streets?
Wait until the thaw, see if the road conditions are going to be in the spring. I got it, Ken, they're not going to be good. And that's it?
Any questions for Rob? Thank you, Rob. Denise, excuse Seward Water, Sam, is there anything that needs to be on Seward Water other than...
Well, same thing, Rob.
Let's keep our fingers crossed for not a lot of trouble with the water. And make sure, keep telling everybody, let your water run, it's probably, it's gonna be into April, I'm sure. Till the frost is on the ground and the first 40-degree day, we don't wanna make turning their water off.
Probably putting the frost loads on next Friday.
You know, beyond usually four, six degrees. Trying to grow like.
This year may be a little heavier with as deep as it is.
Depending on the weather, when the moment's over, fingers crossed. Bill?
The training throughout the month with Bob, getting in more oriented to, orientated to the ways of things and remaining vacation time is used up prior to the end of the year. And, well, complaints are starting to pick up, another net, it's, okay.
Good decision. Any questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill. Rob, communication?
Uh, listen, update on the cameras, I just got an email from Chris Corbett last evening. We give everybody just something to look at, read it, um, we still got some other things to look at, I need to discuss with him, I haven't discussed with Walt yet because I just think I said I just got this from Scott. As far as how to hook it up and so on and so forth, so we'll just table that for now and then, well, once I get with Chris again, which sometimes he's hard to get, get it down.
And you're, you're talking to Walt too, so we're all set on it, fair enough, okay.
The question right now is like the 5, the Cat 5 cable and stuff like that, so. Needing to make sure it's wireless.
All that makes sense, all this to me is the dollar amount, the rest is.
It's the same dollar you afford, six, twelve for the camera, something else I might not consider, it's like Chris even suggests, you know, say the Chamber wants to go on half of this, we can, you can, it's just an IP address, you can put it on their website, you can put it on our website, it's locked in and they can use it and.
Thanks for dealing with that.
Find out one more. It's been, it's great to meet, it's, yeah.
We talked a little bit about it before when you handed them out, and I think one of the big things that we wanna look at is a wireless camera. Yeah, we don't, we really don't, let's say we use Walt's place, we really don't wanna be doing holes in his house, you know, Cat 5 cable through it, the key one is just two holes either, so.
That's fine, could I picture the camera, I mean, it's got antennas, I don't understand what the cable's for, so.
Right, so it's just to make sure.
I already know Scott, I know Scott, he's in Virginia, but I'll email him and see what. It's just one tent, correct, Chris told me you just plug in one tent and all that. I don't, I don't, I'm kinda confused with one email versus what he told me.
Tell Scott if you'd like to come here and tell us about.
I'm watching, grab you here in a couple months, Sarah. And that's good.
Okay, thank you, Rob, you'd be lost in it. Joe, finance, personnel?
Uh, just worked a little bit with Ken here this month on insurance, going over stuff there. Rachel's been working on the budget and we'll soon have that, the new budget implemented. I believe she handed out in all of our packets, the new General Appropriations Act, that's just shows that it's not a proposal anymore. Other than that, Sam brought to my attention the other day, we missed a number in the major streets, I believe it was, Sam, for Salt or without local streets. One or the other $2,500, um, cost there, um, it's not gonna put us over in our fund balance, so there's really, as long as we know that, we'll just see that there was money there or we can put it in if anybody still do, that's a necessity. Is the only thing I have.
Any questions for Joe? You, parts?
Well, nothing to report except the fact that Rachel had her hands full this winter and I think it's Freeville Street, no, no. And Lyle will be up next month, so hope things get in order.
The Sholmos.
I would love it.
Just the chairman, I remember his Lyle did call me today, he was hoping to be here tonight.
Yeah.
But family emergency, so he didn't make it, so he's hoping for next month.
My report? Just so you know, so you don't think we're replacing equipment, you don't know, but this, we will probably, it's in the budget, be buying a new, one new computer in the office store and it sits over on my desk. It has Windows XP on it and everybody's saying, get it, gone. So we will go buy a very cheap, probably refurbished computer through Staples, because Windows XP is gonna cause problems to more because they're gonna stop offering support and there'll be nothing to do with it and they're gonna fill up. So that's been recommended for about three or four people right now, so. Just so you know, it's not a major expense, we're just gonna. Go buy a cheap computer that's obviously refurbished.
Maybe donate the old one to good Sam or something like that?
Yeah, 'cause I, yeah, well, look, I don't think there's any Village, anything on it, you know what I mean? If nothing there, I'd be more than happy to. If everybody's okay with that. You know, yeah, exactly. Windows XP. We got our money's worth, I'll say that.
That, that is actually the original first computer from way.
Again, it's just, it gets worse every day, but it's nothing we're gonna run right out and do. But it's recommended that, I think it's as of April 1st, when they, when they stop offering XP, that we either have a new one hooked up or unplugged, do not leave it hooked up to anything, so we'll deal with that. The other one, I just wanna bring this up, we've been talking about it, I, I remember Brian Patton used to talk about it way back and I talked to Brian about it over the last year, but I just think over the next course of time, we really need to give thought to who truly takes care of day-to-day operations of the village. Because in, in my opinion, we really don't have any place to do it. You know, we don't, we don't have a village supervisor, we don't have a village manager, we have a clerk treasurer who puts in a lot, we just, I just, everybody give us some thought and see what you think, because every year, more and more gets dumped on the village to be done and Joe puts in a lot of time, I, we all have. And I, I think it's getting to the point over the years where it's getting above and beyond what's expected out of council members. So just, I just hope that you must be thinking about it, something we should address, it probably, it's been talked about for years, you know, it just keeps putting, put off and put off and put off and put off, and I'm not saying we're gonna want to hire a $60,000 or a village manager, but at some point, we probably have to try to allocate money for something to do, whether it's increase her hours or however it works, you know, the councilship pays a supervisor. And I'm, I'm, I'm not saying I'm looking for more money because I don't want it, I'm perfectly content with what I'm doing, so don't think that way, you know, I'm just saying, nobody truly runs the day-to-day operations of the village.
What does surrounding municipalities do, like? It's kind of size.
I don't know, I, I, I know Bel Air, and that's, I just compare it to Bel Air. Bel Air pays their clerk, I don't know if she's salary at 40 or more, probably substantially more and she's expected to do a lot more. And if you call anybody in Bel Air, they'll say, oh, they operate more like a village manager, they never gave her that title when Janet Coke was there, but she truly supplied the council with, and they operate more like a village manager type, but they were in the same predicament enough, they knew they didn't have money to hire a village manager. So I think there's probably different solutions, I think we should look around, see what other people do, or just.
Like any business, we should have general managers.
And that's what I'm saying, somebody, you know, I mean, we hire Rachel as a clerk treasurer, she does a great job, but her duties beyond that, you know, and it's just something we need to think about, because it's just gonna keep getting more, if you want the village to move forward and prosper, somebody has to be at the wheel, there has to be that go-to person.
Is there, is there any general direction that we're looking at already or that maybe you have in mind or?
I don't want, I don't want to put any idea, they always have it right now. Yeah, I have my own personal opinions, but I really don't wanna stand, I just want people to perform. They're only gonna talk about next month or the month after, but I think it's, it's a direction we really need to start looking, finances is always a problem.
Twenty years, 20 years ago, John Sager was the one who handled the whole village and he was in your position at the time.
Well, that was 20 years ago. That was 20 years ago. Yeah, as you said, you want the village to move forward, somebody, somebody's got, as I said, there has to be somebody managing. In my, in my opinion, I'm just stating my problem.
In this, I, I guess I'm, I just thinking about there, I mean, we're looking at somebody, some kind of a pay scale and we've gotta come up with a job description or title, I mean, is this something you wanna go to a committee, um, volunteer to put something together and make a recommendation or, I mean, because there's so much involved in that.
Right now, I'm just comfortable, everybody just, everybody just thinks about it for a month or so, then maybe next month we'll talk again and see what direction we wanna, it's not something that's gonna happen fast, but it's, I think it's just a direction we need to look. There's things happening in the village, you know what I mean? We got the grant coming up, we got this coming up, we want the village to reform, we wanna do things in the village and, and I just think it's important that there's somebody there guiding that, I mean, that has, every day. You know, I, I'm not saying it's a 40-hour-a-week job, I'm just saying it has to be our first one, we say it's your responsibility and we'll compensate you for it. So that's.
Then if we're looking at the right things, or we're in this, we're looking for or thinking about a person, pay, hours, and duties.
Either another person who are extended.
Or, right. Yeah, probably just saying, I just wanna make sure my own opinions, I have mine and I'm gonna keep it to myself for now. So that is my little ramble for tonight. That is all I have in the president's report. I would accept the motion, any questions for you? Yeah. I would accept the motion to approve bills prepaid in the amount of $8,476.62. Payroll in the amount of $5,317.12. Tables in the amount of $16,033.30. The total approved bills of $29,827.4. Motion by Chapman, second by Bodley, go call please. Yes.
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 Yes? Yes. I have no new business, does anybody have any new business? Might be a first. Thank you. I want you to action item. Action item A is to approve the policy handbooks that are distributed in last month, they need to be landed table for 30 days. I would accept the motion to approve the policy handbooks as presented.
I'd make that motion.
Motion by Bodley, second by Chapman, any discussion?
They're good.
Motion passes and then Rachel is gonna pass this down the line, we'll all initial it, just, just so we know it was done, it was passed today and it was initial.
And then with this also, um, Rachel will get ready for all the employees. As you guys told us, get their signature sheets in.
All in favor. Thank you. Gonna have myself, thank you, thanks, Bill. I was gonna say, yes, but. So as we're doing that, the next one, it says it's Pavilion Rental on Sunrise and there's some other, I think we gave agree with some concerns that came up in the, in the, not, not purely concerned, the issues in the campground that I think we should just take care of tonight so we can move on. Okay. No, Lyle was here in October, remember, we took recommendations.
Originally that was the thing, or last year. To, for the, originally in the reservations, Lyle wanted to have the clerk start doing, then by the end of that meeting, I believe it was October or like, Lyle had decided he had already taken some reservations and he wanted to keep doing them for the following year. That was, that was then, but since then, we've had to request it of the Pavilion Renter and what the cost was.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot more to the map.
Oh, there is, yes, yes, but that was what, speaking of what Bill was there.
So, yeah, we kinda have a.
I believe Bill, it was talked about also seeing the, how easy it would be to put out a reservation system, um, and we're in, which fairly, so.
Okay, but the first one that, and we need to clear out because it's happening is we never clarified how we wanna deal with extended stays. What sites should be available for extended stays, do we offer discounts, and how are they paid for? I guess, I guess we could, we wanna narrow it down. What, I guess, number one, I guess, is what sites do we think should be available for extended stays? Should it be any site they want, should we say it's top of the hill only, should we, we don't have waterfront where they allow to, so we're talking non-waterfront.
Right now, every site has, what, a 15-day maximum, I believe?
Yes. But we, we did it in October, we had, well, we had quite a lot in October and we agreed to talk about it during the winter and make a decision. And here we are, people are making reservations. So.
I, I.
Oh, go ahead, Rob.
You wanna decide where our extended stays are going to be?
I think that's a good, on this one issue, but I, site, I mean. Right now, I, I think it's any, there's no, there's nothing in our rules right now, and right now, there are no extended stays in our rules, there's a 15-day maximum stay on our site.
The top of it should always be extended.
I, I, I agree with you, we love it, I would like to see, we've got the two on the lakefront sites that we've allowed there, why not make just the top of the hill, um, maybe even sit the backside of the top of that hill an extended stay because that seems to be the least used, maybe that'll push it, we could give a little bit of a discount and fill that as extended stays more so. Um, I know there's a lot of people disagreeing because they wanna be down on the lake or they wanna be overlooking it and there is some people who'll come up and wanna stay for three months right on top of the hill, so.
I've had requests for people wanting permits.
I mean, my, my opinion, that backside or inner circle up on top of the hill is extended stays or seasonals, that's just my personal.
Are there any, are there any requests for that on the website, for coming somewhere for the top side or?
I don't think we have an area for them to like really reach to us or anything like that, it's not. They either make reservation, I guess we have email they could, but nobody, I have no one's email.
The back of the dome, at the foot of the hill, wouldn't be a bad place to allow extended stays either. I'm concerned about not putting too much on the front because you know constant people wanting to come in for just a weekend and or a week and keep it going like that, because you could block it all up for just a few people, that's gonna hurt others and they're not gonna like it and they'll quit coming.
So your recommendation is extended stay at the top of the.
At the top of the hill and possibly at the foot too, that back row, at the foot of the hill there.
In a circle.
Yeah.
We're talking in a little circle.
The prime sites on the top of the hill.
I would not, I would not, I, in my personal opinion, the prime sites overlooking the lake on top of the hill, I would not make them extended stays. Maybe, again, to be flexible, one.
Well, there's two deep there.
But. Because I know there is a lot of people who've come in and they like staying there all summer overlooking that.
But then there, there you're talking about extended stays.
Yeah.
We got one last one, on the front side of the hill.
Yeah, I would be, we're looking at, uh, site 29, is it, I think?
Where's Mike, I think his last name for, what's his, from Chicago?
We did site 11.
Or was? Every summer for what, 20-some years? Yeah, some maybe.
Right now, sites 11, 14, and 29 are blocked because those were extended stays last year, I can tell you that. And it probably will be this year. If, if, if we, okay, I'm saying we, we have to decide, 11, 11 is.
11 and 12 would have been our worst rented lots.
Yes, and 11 isn't extended, that's in an area, that's in a lot of areas.
That's for Mike's state.
14 is just across, 14 is just across the street from that.
We're right up against Craig.
And 29 is, we're just on top of the hill. Well, we're okay with that, yeah, we can say those are the three extended, I, I, I'm 90% sure they'll be taken by the same people this year, probably.
Living some discretion to beyond these that they're food, I mean, they shouldn't be.
See, that's, that's what I really like.
But when people make the reservation, you, you can't, you have to decide now or somebody's gonna come and take the site, you know what I mean?
We gotta nail it down.
We do, we really do.
Put it into the program.
Yes. Yeah, because that's the only way to do it, like, let people come, I'll just say, I'd like site 11 and they died like 14, I'd like 29, and I'll go and say, okay, watch. And we have to decide what site. And we have our Lyle or any who are the campground managers to do that with, because of reservation system now, if you don't, so I'm just gonna reserve it one weekend, and then you can't say, oh, you gotta move out, we're gonna let this guy have it for 60 days.
So when you say the top of the hill, how many sites are you talking about in general?
Well, we've had, I don't have any in front of me now, I, is it nine up there?
Nine or 10, isn't it?
But the back row next to the row is four, and then, I think, I think it's about nine.
The back side, right? I would just admit, say, if you want that for 60 days. Yeah.
I have four back plates on the top.
I would do that extended stay.
Four extended stays on the back.
And we'll talk about this one, we'll say which ones.
I'm gonna pull the.
What about, and is it there some that come every year that get the extended stay on the front row of the top of the hill?
Go back to that one lot.
Just that one?
That's 29, though.
Yep.
So if we have those five.
That's, pull it up so I can see it.
What I was thinking about when I down on foot of the hill is those, some of the people who are old people that walk up the hill, it's difficult for them. And if we have maybe one or two down there for extended stays that they might wanna stay, but they prefer to be on a worse level.
There's bases, they'll put numbers on it, unless, if you put that, it does.
This one?
Yep. 35, yeah, 36, 37, 38, 39, and 40, right, what I just said?
37, 38, 39. Thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty.
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty are the backside of the.
Thirty-six through forty then?
Yes.
And you went, and we also already have eleven and twelve, correct?
Have eleven, fourteen, and twenty-nine.
Eleven, fourteen, and twenty-nine. So it's eight or, don't write that number.
Keep those three and fill up that back row.
Back row off on top of the hill?
Yep.
But, but, see the. Does that say we restrict those sites of anybody that wants them? Their extended stay only? What if somebody, if nobody's on it, if somebody's on the reservation, say, we would like site thirty-eight for two weeks? That's what I'm saying. Do we want to just say they're available now, when they're gone, they're gone?
I, I like that idea. We talked about that before. First come, first served.
But if you want it, you can take it. Okay, that's what I'm saying. We don't want to block them off the system, no. That, that hurts, not any sites if they want you now, those can be extended stay. Okay, because we'll have, we'll have to call, we'll change it within our system, you can do it. By we, I mean.
So if we start this like this and, and building on it, we've, many of us have talked this before on that upper backside of making these an extended stay. First come, first served reservation. If we find that we can push them with a discount, maybe, which we'll discuss later, there's room up there to add sites to this same thing where we can do it.
And who for seasonals? Lyle in there for five years.
So then put some trees here to use.
I asked you earlier, I talked about you with that center.
I think, I think there's a lot of room to wiggle up there.
Really, I have that chance if you want. It's only yours. But we can talk about that further as we go. But even Sam and I talked about that, about getting sewer and stuff up there, so it's not a huge expense. So, okay, so do we want to, do we want to change the system? Eleven, fourteen, and twenty-nine are blocked and, and we can just tell Lyle, as long as he's got those. Go ahead and reserve them extended stays, those people are willing to take them, they'll be good with that.
Now, are we gonna say that we're gonna honor them if this is what it is for this year only? Or next year, is he gonna be able to do that?
Well, we'll talk about that.
Those are used to cheap, those have come, been coming rid of.
I got, I got some other thoughts on those too. But, so we, we're in a system and thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty will be allowed to be extended stays. If, if people take them, they can, if they don't, they may get booked up two weeks at a time for them, okay?
So the verb is to say thirty-six through forty are available for extended stays?
Yeah, there'll be no fifteen day restriction.
So that doesn't preclude anybody that wants to stay there for a weekend?
Yeah, yeah, and that's just the change. Yeah, and every year might change. We may say, wow, we should have done, but for this year, we have to start summer, okay. But this is on what site. My second question is, do we want to allow a discount on those sites up there to try and encourage more people to stay up there? Like maybe sites twenty-nine and fourteen and eleven, might say, wow, if you give us a two dollar a day discount, we'll be able to book it. We want to, we want to save that. And we offer discount for extended stays. By most, we didn't have a problem with, certain sites we did. The backside of the hill and probably the worst ones we had were the backside of the inner circle. Does that make sense? The sites, the bottom of the hill. Those were the ones the least rented. And I can have the, the least.
Was there?
The lighter one. But do we want to offer, and I, it doesn't matter, we can offer discount? For all extended stays, for just the ones at the back of the hill?
Twenty-dollar sites, correct? I believe them are all full hookup, they were a twenty-dollar site, that was right up on top of the hill, the backside, they're all full hook up. But I, you know, I don't remember right off if we changed some of them back to fifteen because of the location of them was rather, I don't remember enough. And Lyle.
We don't have fifteen-dollar sites again?
Twenty-five, right? Twenty-five is lakefront, all the rest are twenty.
Well, then we took these from twenty-five because they were full hookup to twenty. Because on top of the hill, on that overlooking the lake is twenty-five. And so the backside, we took to twenty.
Lakefront, well, yes.
While these backside ones, which would be the thirty-six through forty are twenty-dollar sites, even though they're full hookup, not the twenty-five.
Or do we do no discounts? Let's see what happens. That's what I'm saying. Just to see how it plays out.
I would say if they say for more than thirty days, let's give them a discount, see.
I, I agree, so we just don't offer discounts. It's only twenty dollars a site. I mean, seriously, it's. Yeah, I think they're gonna, they really do, like, tell any of them that.
I don't, well, last year, Lyle, one of his concerns and one of his issues that he wanted to try to push you was the discount for people. They didn't have extended stay and we ended up, because of length of that meeting, we didn't work on it.
I think we have discretion if it looks like he's gonna be too.
I, I. I think we should.
Extended stays have about fourteen days?
I would say.
Don't we have to establish that?
Fifteen days.
Fifteen day minimum.
More than fifteen days. Fifteen day maximum stay on our site.
All right, so extended day, extended stay is greater than?
Sixteen days or more.
Sixteen days?
Yeah, sixteen days or more.
So me, when I make the reservation, I'm always gonna take the sixteen days, now I get a two dollar discount for fifteen days and I save thirty bucks. That's where my mind works. That's where we create a scenario that people will play this, wouldn't you? I would say no discount. My, my first thought, I would just say if there are twenty-dollar sites, it's a.
And I find that for this, where she would, I, I would think that anything over like thirty days, I would like to see it. Because I know you're truly getting.
But like, so we have ninety-three percent occupancy issue, why wouldn't we start offering discounts? Because people will come.
I like to see that comment.
It is.
How can you hold off? When he just said what he said.
We already are.
We have our best year, the camping part last year ever.
I think we leave the discount on, personally. Just for the year. For twenty bucks a site, you're part of the one site.
Yeah, if, if. For now. Okay.
We always left it up to Lyle, how could I know that? He did it quite well.
He's handling it very well. Okay, then my next question is, how do we want them to pay for their extended sites? If the guy comes in and, and some of them, they take it for ninety days. Do we want it paid all upfront? Do we want to say you pay us for your first two weeks and then every two weeks make sure you're paid? You know what I mean? We'll hold at that, but you, you reserved it for two weeks at a time. I don't expect people coming and paying it all once. But we, we need some, we need policies in place.
Unless you're gonna refund it, if they have to, I think you probably ought to pay it all at once.
It's kind of hard to get somebody to.
Also, there's some people on limited incomes that probably truly couldn't. That was his concern. Some of those are the people, you know what I mean?
They don't have the money once.
I believe last year.
Thirty or fifteen, whatever, whatever.
If you're gonna be there ninety days, pay for thirty days.
You want, you want thirty days?
Like you say, they're fixed income, they get one check a month or whatever, that gives them thirty days. Three easy payments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That one's pretty good. Second item is how many sites do we hold off the reservation system for like weekend driving? If, you know, people show, we, we talked about it, we say, how many sites do I always want left off? Or do we want none? Do we just want to fill it out?
The way people make reservations now, I know when we're traveling, we're on a, on a computer making reservations.
Yeah, I, 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 you know, I can only say my personal opinion, I don't have none, but things have changed, you know?
I pulled up the hotel and literally was in the car making the reservation.
Absolutely.
I think people know that now.
So we do it the day before, we get a couple of dollar discount because we're doing it online and.
So, so what we're gonna say is we're not gonna leave any open, because last year we allowed Lyle, I think it was five, we allowed him to, to block off that. So, and unfortunately, no, that's fine with me, I, that's.
That may be your other seven percent.
Well, the reservation there that we have now, system, it, it shouldn't be any problem for somebody to make reservations ahead.
This works good right now, as you know, Rachel will tell you that. We've got a lot of, a lot of the campground already booked up, the people know. Rachel, Rachel sent a letter up to Lyle on the old time, the, the reservation system. We called a couple, so our reservation system is available this year. Because somebody had known, I thought, man, you take a site every year, they don't know it now. So we truly notified them and let them know. If you want those sites, get on there, reserve it, because the reservation systems are running all in.
I think it's great.
I think it's going real good. Okay. Pavilion rental, do we want to find a way to make that available on our reservation system? I'm, I'm, I would say yes. First and foremost, why not?
Are you gonna? How many times did it get rented last year?
We still rent most of Lyle.
They do, but, but at least then they can, I mean, they don't have to, I'm just saying, it's a convenient way for them to do it. They get on and say, well, the pavilion's available on July second, we'd like it and. How many times last year, how many times did you say you rented that pavilion last year? Half a dozen or?
Oh.
Not more than?
My, 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 my sister, my sister.
You just get on the reservation system, okay.
That's the point.
Yeah, be right on our reservation system, they'll create something for it.
Makes it easier for Rachel, makes it for everybody.
Okay, now we just, we gotta make sure that Lyle's aware of that and how that works and how.
Lyle was on for that last year.
Somebody else said, I mean, it's done.
Lyle wanted that last year.
So we will do it. Okay, are we, are we still okay with the pavilion rental rate?
How much is it? I am listening because I have a reserve for my kid's graduation party, so do I need to now go to the computer or will Rachel fix that or?
If, if you have it reserved, we'll get it in the system before anybody else takes it, okay? I'll promise you that.
Yeah, I'll make sure it gets there.
What I say, I, Rachel.
Twenty-five fifty.
It's twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty-five without kitchen, fifty with it.
Yep.
Deposit?
You pay when you go in.
Twenty-five without kitchen, twenty, fifty. I don't know anything about.
Well, as we say.
I don't know anything about.
Are we, are we, are those good rates? We're a couple of those two rates, let's do that first.
We've, we've had those before.
Now, is that the whole day, twenty-four hours?
It's a bargain. It brings people into town.
Oh, I know, but. I mean, you have access to it all day, you could do anybody else you want to do all day long.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay, I'm, I think. I mean, I think in the future, we'll look at that, well, it's a great thing we can offer.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Deposit on the pavilion?
Yes.
Or is it currently?
We've never had deposit.
Yeah, I think it's like a free deposit, a dollar deposit, yes.
When we took it, not until we went and signed up to get it. We had it last year and paid Lyle when we got there and said, I reserved it. We went down there and we gave them the money down there.
Who had it?
I have. Last year I rented it.
I think we gotta have a deposit out of it because that's part of the cleaning and all that.
Do you, do you need the deposit if it's just?
All the deposits are cursing to clean up their mess.
Ten.
Ten?
Forty-five fifty.
The same thing?
Same thing we got.
All we're trying to do is cursing to clean up their mess so we don't have to come and empty the garbage cans and clean up. If we do, we keep the deposit.
Will a deposit go through the reservation system too? Will the deposit go through the reservation system? I know there is.
You know, it's never really been an issue.
And Lyle goes and makes sure.
Wow, those are a good job they got.
Yep, he does.
I think, I think that works pretty good. That if Lyle is only empty cans before people, they get those and Sam and the guys are really good to make sure they're down there. Um, if it's a mess or whatever, everything will, right, so.
So the decision on deposit was?
My concern with the pavilion hall is that we make sure that, that everybody's getting it, um, and like, um, like the chamber would be a prime example. They, at the beginning of this year, they gave us a package with all these dates. Different if they want to, you want to make sure that them, that pavilion is available for them before somebody else is booking it online. So, I mean, and that's great, well, let's say, if we put this on our system and somebody says, well, you know what, next year, July third or, well, eighth, I want the pavilion. And the chamber doesn't know that, they come back to us and at the beginning of the year again, hand us another book that says, you know, the fifth, we're doing this, or the eighth, we're doing this. We've got to be able to make sure that that gets into play, that the chamber, I guess I would say, takes precedence over something that away.
Oh, by far, yeah, of course.
So clarify. I'm writing it and I'm gonna spend fifty dollars to get it with the kitchen and I'm gonna give a fifty dollar deposit. And I can run all of that through the computer.
That's what I should, right?
And then they give you the fifty dollars?
Well, I mean, I'll get a fifty dollar credit on my card or Lyle's gonna give me my fifty bucks cash back or.
I'd say if you do it by card, Lyle's gonna go in and he's gonna credit it back on you in the car. If you give it to him in cash, he's gonna give it to you back.
Put the reservation.
Well, so then we're talking two separate transactions. If there's one for rental and one for the deposit, is what I'm getting at.
That's something we can get worked out. It should be, yeah, because we don't want all these card fees on it. We want like, it, I would ask you, if you rent it with the kitchen, it's a hundred dollars, fifty dollar refundable deposit. So you're making one transaction with one card fee. Yes. But we have to check on, we have to think about this. Are we gonna give charge a six dollar fee for that? Yes, if they're using the credit in our system, absolutely.
Yeah.
So the, the credit card system's worth six dollars for reservation.
So I can come here and give Rachel a hundred bucks cash and she'll go to the computer and do it? I mean, because there's gonna, that's gonna happen. There's gonna be people that have no computer savvy or not.
That doesn't cost us six bucks too.
But, but if it does, do, are we still comfortable with our rates if there's a six dollar charge reasonably in the reservation system?
Yes.
You know, like, right now, they pay the six dollars. Is what I'm saying. When you reserve a campsite, you pay that six dollar transaction fee and the pavilion should be the same. You'll do the reservation system, your twenty-five, it's gonna cost you thirty-one dollars.
Yes.
When did they start that?
Well, it's the reservation system.
Yeah, yeah, they like this, they want to come in here.
Down at Troy, I want that pavilion this weekend, I can do it here, it costs you six bucks.
They go to the hotel, the hotel, you don't know, dirty hand. They already had that on.
We don't make any money off that debt.
Pretty much it's a wash. Like you do right now, when they reserve sites, it's a six dollar transaction.
If you're doing it cash, there's no six dollars.
If you're doing it cash or coming internally. Okay.
When you reserve the pavilion, do you have to go to Lyle to get the key every single time? Then couldn't you just do it that you, you, you say on your reservation system that a, a twenty-five dollar deposit is due when you pick up the key? That way, he can take cash or a check, hold it, and at the end of the day, when you leave, he can just hand it right back to you. Again, would you hand him back the key?
The, the problem there is, is maybe I'll do it thinking, maybe I'll use it, maybe I won't. And I got a reserve for this weekend and then I decide not to.
She's talking about the.
Well, you, you, you pay to reserve it online, but then.
Do you have an option to leave your deposit with your manager?
Yeah, in order to avoid the having to give the money back and that, all that extra.
Good, it's something we can look and see if there's even an option is to make a, um, deposit, yeah, pay deposit at time of reservation or.
Like when you go to a rental place, deposit, check, report it out, you hand it back and tear it up, you go away and lock up the door. Okay. We will see how it fits in the system.
I don't know.
Well, it's the same. Why can't we, yeah, no. When you go to a motel, they hold your card, they don't even take your money, they hold your card number, and then if you don't get your deposit, then they charge your card. You would have to transact any money.
Yeah, a card, you can do that, because one, once they give you twenty-five dollars.
Say with a card.
Lock in your card.
Then you don't even have to credit their card back, you don't even have to consume the money until they screwed up and you have to consume their money. As long as you have, as long as you hold their card.
That's why, that's why they love you paying with a card, because they have your entire card, you know, hotels and stuff, you can damage everything on your card.
Yeah, they're gonna.
Okay, we will talk with.
Yeah, and there's no transaction at all except for the rental fee.
Right. The word we allows it. Which is the word we allow it to.
Well, everybody, yeah. Right. They mean one.
Pavilion is enough to the condition you found that there will be a twenty-five dollar charge on your card.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly. If they pay by card, if they pay cash, we want them.
We definitely deposit it on the cash.
Okay.
Dude, are you talking of developing a little brochure or flyer or something or words on the websites or?
If you have your reservations, we want it really clear on there when we do it, how it works.
Well, and I'm talking about just for the locals here in town that may not ever go to the reservation system, something that's clear, this is the way it is.
We do, we'll get it on our website, we put it out there, we should, we can probably get some little.
Centralic news to rub on their paper walls. But, well, who had the flyers for you? We can ground flyers anyway, when we last year we had them.
Yeah.
Did you have a number?
The brochure?
Yeah.
Maybe I have.
Oh, I did?
See, that's something we just be adding on.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay, we will work through that.
Okay.
And to everybody knows right now, since there was, there was issues on the reservation system between Sunrise, things happening, all kinds of issues, so. As of right now, only Rachel has full access to do things behind that site, and, and honestly, I, I like it that, I talked to Joe, Joe and I both have low access. I don't, I don't want anything to do with the backside of it, I, I think if you're gonna have somebody to be responsible for, it should be that, some, one. So, when Lyle comes up, we're gonna have to allow Lyle on air to do some of his stuff. But if we want Rachel responsible for what happens on the backside of that site, I think it should be just. He will, he'll, he'll do the things he needs to do, you know what I mean, but as far as full access, I think the owner should have full access, nobody disagrees, say so, is Rachel, or we hold?
All I need to see is the reports and stuff like that, and, and not even that, I can get them from.
Yeah, from Rachel if I need to. So, right now.
I'm fine with it.
Joe and I both agreeing, we just moved it everybody off, and it's only Rachel now to sort things out.
One cook in the kitchen.
Okay, but I do agree that once Lyle is back, we've gotta give him the ability to do his job, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We all know that.
We just have to get it in control of one person till we got things sorted out. So, I think we got, on just some things that I'll, you know, the, the, some of the problems we incurred on it was, in fifteen minutes, if you're on the site for fifteen minutes, it times out. They don't notify you of that very well, we had people that truly thought they had a site, it took all their information, gave them a confirmation number, and they never got the site because it timed out. I talked to them like three times, they're working on it, we're gonna, we're gonna deal with something, and we have a little disclaimer box, and we're gonna let people know what to look for in the end. Make sure you can email confirmation and make sure that the, at the last page, that should notify you that your reservation has been completed. We have to let them know, make sure you see that, I'll, I'll sunrise, they told me they're, they're working on rewriting the program. They wanna put a timeout clock on it, and I tell them, I think it's a big mistake that you get a confirmation number when you truly don't have the site. I, I, I told that Tyler Duff, I said, when I get a confirmation number, my mind says, okay, I have this, mine, you gave me a confirmation number. But they, but they weren't getting the site, and we had one that, the same site, I got one three times. So, they know it's a problem, and they're working on it, but we're gonna find a way to word it right now, disclaimer, they see it right away. Cause we, we sent out letters, we called people, it was, it was, that's when we decided we gotta kind of plan things out for a while until we get it under control. So, Sunrise knows it, they're working on it. It's, it's, it's compatible with Firefox, Safari, Google Chrome, Internet Explorer eight and above, nothing below. But they don't recommend Internet Explorer eight because the math doesn't become interactive. Once again, they're working on better notification people that, so they get on, it's not working, right, they understand. So, it's another little detail they're working on, and they're working on giving reports availability for more than ninety-two days.
Yeah.
Cause we wanna get the season, we wanna know what happened, I wanna report. So, there, there are little things they're working through, I, I think it's a great system, I know Joe's, Rachel has, it's working great, it's just.
Some, a lot of little ones. I mean, they're, they're a newer company, they haven't been in business a long time, but they really jumped out there and, and created a great program, they're gonna have their butt to work out in it, so.
So. Any other, that's all I have for, but, Lou, you have anything that's all I have on my sheet is?
The only thing I, it isn't under rental, but we've been looking to put, replacing some trees down there at the park. Also, we talked about putting water down to the park and possibly in the future, putting a bathroom up for the people over here.
Yeah, that's.
Those are the three items we talked about.
Yeah, we want to make a nap. I would love to see a bathroom up there, seasonal stains.
Yes.
Yeah, I would love to, I think, I think, I think we'll get there someday. The other thing I just thought of, and I can tell me your opinion, I think we should have coded alarms on the bathroom doors if people want to carry keys around. And I don't think, which we'll check in the vine, because they're gonna have to be, they're on other places, you'll just pass.
They'll, they'll. A push cord, right? How do you, how do you like them?
Uh, they're, they're all right for the first three or four years and then the problems.
I've got, I've got them on my office at work, and we've had them, I live out four years now, and the only thing we have to do is the battery, but now ours are just the hundred and twenty dollar Home Depot specials. Um, I'm sure yours are a little more.
They're, 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 they're not easy to change your combination.
Up Rapids Harbor has it for the boat slips, when the transient boaters come in, you get a code and they switch it.
Okay, so is either, is it something worth looking at?
I think it's wonderful.
Okay, I just. I don't know why you can't, I would not wanna have to always carry on this key, or get the key here, run back, they get one key and, okay.
Yeah. We will. Now, I don't know, Bill, I don't know about yours, but ours at work, um, no matter what, it's always unlocked from the inside, but you can also turn the deadbolt or turn the, the locking mechanism and it's unlocked from the outside also.
Okay.
That's it then.
Okay.
Those trees are the ones that concern me now, we put that to some dead trees, they need to be taken down, replaced.
I'm sure you'll be looking at that come spring, right then?
Yes.
Three branches.
We're, we're, we're gonna turn some trees this time.
They could, they could, they could have a great year last year, and a better one this year.
Okay.
Yes.
Can we come up with rules and regulations for those? Kind of like a kind of mission.
I'm trying to picture our park rules and stuff, we should.
Those skateboards, I saw that.
Was just on the.
That's a, oh, yeah, that's definitely on.
Confused, or we used to always have.
I got.
Big, big deal. Well, not necessarily, if, if you're gonna rent that pavilion once, really allowing, are we allowing alcohol, are we allowing fireworks, are we allowing people to?
I think fireworks is a definite no, isn't it?
Yeah.
I heard that.
So, did they, have they changed the law on fireworks again?
It's like you can't shoot them up on a public.
No.
But I'm just saying, the question is, you can't shoot them up on a public, probably not shit permission, so are we actually giving people permission or?
I, we, we can go down there, bad girl, give people permission.
No, 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 but I'm just saying, if the rules and regulations should say, our position as a village is no, one hundred percent, you don't, don't even ask for permission, don't even assume you're gonna get permission because you don't get it.
Are, are you volunteering to write up little setup we can look at?
I, I can look into it.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'll, I'll steal somebody else's.
I agree, yeah, I, I agree, we should, we, we need. So, people understand, they know, it's hard to report, you're gonna be like.
Whatever you meant to, we are, right?
I don't think we do, we need to do it and get them to understand.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Scott.
Well, now the reservation system, a little box where you check that says, I agreed to these rules.
Yes.
Good idea.
C Y A.
Do you have that ready next month, yeah?
Sure. No, it, it would make my job a lot easier.
I think it's a good idea.
If I were to solve a problem, I should gonna say, listen, remember when you checked that off, sir? And then, you know, according to what you guys passed a couple of years ago, I mean, I can boot them up, but I'm not ready to position to boot them up if they're not truly aware of what.
Yeah, break the rules if they don't know. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, I'd just like to say that with the camp, I think, some good work, we've got a long place to go, or a lot of movement in there, we just keep working on moving forward at minimal cost. And I think that's really important, that we always gotta plan ahead and working towards something in there.
Yeah, there'd be, there'd be big improvements, it should, it's a great.
We talked before about maybe putting some trees along this tree, give it a little more privacy.
Oh, yeah.
Some wood, take, like, so, like, ground robbers come in, dump four or five trees there, and you, you know, six, whatever.
Yeah, and we'll generate.
Heights or something.
I, I think it's.
Take it out, we do, we put some cost trees, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm for it a hundred percent.
That way, you know, you move forward, you got some privacy, there might be more out to stand, that would help.
Oh, yeah.
One, one issue that will arise is trailer parking, because that is the trailer parking area, um, is there something that we can do to off that?
Nice school.
There you go.
And other towns do it, you know, the school parking lot system doesn't use, and you just, I know it's not as convenient, but it is a lot of other areas too, you take your boat, ferry it up to the, or no. Yes.
The backside of Don, Donaldson Field too, we have that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so we have a lot of ample places.
Bus, bus garage.
Well, yeah, Bill, Jones, Donaldson Park, so they're parking on that side, like.
Yeah.
Because sessions can.
One of my questions, there, just because of the convenience and the clothes.
Oh, yeah, we do right now.
What about, what about on the, um, curbside of, of Saharic Street, like beneath the ballpark of the garage, or will there be a problem putting them there?
Oh, I don't think it would, too, there, with the bank there, put three little, yeah, there might be more room down by here, field, I think we have lots of options if we get to that point, but.
Not, not here, field, but Donaldson Field.
Yeah. Yeah, a bunch of, there's even down there, there's lots of parking the school doesn't use in the summer months. If you do the rest for, hopefully, a parking. Okay.
Maybe we're better than to call the owners of the old Destaco property.
Why, we just started losing the.
That's government corporation.
There you go, government corporation.
Yeah, that's, it's hard to drive in that style.
Okay, and I can see is health insurance. Does anybody have that sheet, I really don't know if I have.
I don't know, but I'm, I'm on it.
What's, what's been told?
Unfortunately, there's two people on the board don't have it.
I do?
Can you?
I, I saw that.
Yeah.
Cause, Joe's not gonna back it up. And I didn't put one in, in Joe's back.
I see.
And I was gonna drive to him, to, to that. I don't have mine, Scott.
We have budgeted, now, correct me if I'm wrong, is, did you guys work through a lot of the healthcare costs other than dental, this is health and HSA.
Health and HSA.
Um, in our budget, it's a total of forty-nine thousand and sixty dollars. So, everybody knows, we, we do not wanna go over that, and we won't, would actually be some, some, some savings. What they have proposed is that we purchase them a new policy that they talked to Kathy Patton about, through Priority Health. I don't know if you're lying, some of us were there, it's twenty percent cold pay, it's a fifteen hundred dollar, three thousand dollar deductible, thirty-six hundred, seventy-two hundred dollar pocket limit, twenty percent co-insurance. It's, it's, it's an HSA, HMO policy, that policy would cost us thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-two cents, which probably could change up or down a little bit when you do the actual enrollment. Uh, what they have done is, is. We budgeted forty-nine thousand. There would, after the thirty, after the premium for that policy, there'd be ten thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-eight cents in that. They are proposing that we increase our HSAs truly a minimal amount, two hundred dollars for family, hundred dollars for single, making their, making their family contribution with HSA twenty-eight hundred, an increase from twenty-six hundred. And single fourteen hundred, increase from thirteen hundred. That puts our HSA contribution at ninety-eight hundred dollars. Combine the two together, and we still come in four hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-eight cents, under budget for what we agreed to spend on your health insurance for this year.
Can't beat that. I thought I'm gonna, I don't know, I'd like to look at this.
This, this, this will not.
Okay.
If you look at group insurance, it's locked in for one year. Would it be? No. So, is there any?
I don't, I don't see why, it's, we're talking about it.
I'm good with it.
You know, if, uh, all the pluggies are integrated.
Yes, Sam, you talked to all of your guys.
We all, all four people sat down together and have gone over this, and we come up with this together.
And Scott, you're?
Well, Scott's, Scott's one of the four.
Okay. I, I stopped down, I talked to Sam a little bit, I seen the guys on the street, asked them, and, and this, like, the same thing they do, you know, that they like her.
But now I have one additional question to ask the board. We have, our old policy has the vision on it. Can we, this policy does not have the vision on it. Can we pay for it out of our pockets, out of payroll deduction per month to have the vision continue? Cause I understand that's a different policy wholly.
Yeah, the vision is to VSP, most all vision is like.
Yeah, I don't know how it works, yeah.
Yep, I, I, my gosh, I wouldn't be opposed to that, no.
Absolutely.
And that's, you know, out of our, for payroll deduction, I don't know what it's gonna do to her now, so, that's why, that's why I wanted to say it to the board first.
See, see, Rachel's.
Rachel doesn't mind.
I'm not, that's why I'm presenting it to you guys.
Did we say, did we talk about the dental?
The dental is, is still what it was, correct?
Correct.
The dental's not even in this number.
So, Sam and I had talked about the dental as a rider too, if that would be more feasible to do a separate policy rider versus what you guys pay to us per year.
What I've been, what, I, I talked to Kathy a little bit today, the dental insurance is gonna be a whole lot more. That was her answer, a whole bunch more. And then I hate to say it, but, uh, Steve, Jeff and myself sat down, and the three of us do not want to that. Scott is the one who wants the dental put on.
Yeah, but two kids coming up with braces, so.
And I, I understand his portion.
So, that's what I'm looking at, is, is it more feasible to take the eight hundred dollars as what you guys pay, or do I take that eight hundred dollars?
Oh, oh, the eight hundred dollars is a raise. It, it's not what they take. We give up a raise to get that eight hundred dollars.
I know, I'm just saying for the.
So, let's, let's make that clear to start with, that's where the dental come in at.
So, you're, when you're saying.
Was a thousand.
You're saying the three of you in the DPW are, are asking out, out of the dental?
We, we do that, also, the, the, the three Department of Public Works guys do not want the dental, because the dental that you supply us with is sufficient for the three of us.
They don't wanna.
They don't, they don't.
Right, yeah.
They don't want dental insurance, they want what they have now.
Right, right.
So, it's a meat point, so, we're okay.
So, we do currently give them a dental then. So, yeah, we give them a loan. Right, yeah, but.
But if you don't use it, you lose it, it goes back to the village, it does not cure you.
My question was simply, instead of a allowance, is it better to have a separate dental rider policy?
I think it's.
Oh, we were just checking into it.
I think, and I'm, I'm not, I'm just, I think it's worth, maybe for the eight hundred dollars, what, what do you want, like, what is your?
Eight, eight hundred.
Okay, maybe we can buy a policy that covers you a lot better than that for eight hundred dollars for you, you know what I'm saying? It's worth having a conversation with Kathy Patton, I think is what Scott's saying, maybe we can buy better insurance and give you the eight hundred. You know what I'm saying? It's worth having a conversation with Kathy Patton about, I think is what Scott's saying, maybe we can buy better insurance and give you the eight hundred.
And you go back through your files and work, but then you're gonna answer your own question. I haven't used mine in four years. Steve has, Steve didn't use a pending in his last year. Jeff hasn't used a pending in three years. So, look at that, look at that one, now you're losing one. Oh, my mind is a disaster.
So, right now, though, if you don't use it, you lose it.
You lose it, you, you guys get it back, or you just, you rebudget another and?
You guys are darn nice, cause I'm telling you, I would use mine.
I don't have no teeth, I'm not even.
No.
My, my wife is in the same boat, she's.
Okay, you know. Yeah, I mean.
It's a, it's a, it's a.
My daughter. If that was a raise, why aren't you guys?
It took us seventeen dollars on one, to have a rider on the.
That's a, that's a question years ago.
That's a no-brainer.
I, I know, let me, I'm talking to Kathy, the two percent, that's outside the group coverage, I think, I mean, that's an add-on, maybe you can add just one, I don't know.
I'm telling you, that we all will be on it.
But I, 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 on the group policy, yeah, it is add-on back up, like a vision? I know the form of care, vision has to be offered, but they accept it. Because you do have it, under this policy, your kids have vision.
Yeah. Then why are we doing a vision policy?
You don't. Minors have vision. So, when it comes to buying your VSP plan, you should, you should talk to Kathy, cause you may be able to save some because your minor children.
Nothing to do with it.
What's that?
Kathy doesn't have anything to do with it.
Priority Health?
Priority Health doesn't have anything to do with the vision.
Sure does.
No, it's a, it's an old Blue Cross and Blue Shield policy.
I examined, no charge, one exam per contracted year.
That's your, that's your VSP policy.
This is already helped, obviously, that's what I'm saying, it has vision.
Nope.
It, I just had this printout from Priority Health, Kathy Patton.
Talking to her too.
Kathy, can you just tell yourself?
Both, both two different stories.
This, this is the, this is the, I just.
I'm telling you, if we vote on anything.
No, I'm, I'm, I did, no. Glasses, no charge, covers limited, one frame, one pair of eyeglasses, it's for minors.
Minors?
Yeah.
Okay, not at all.
No, no, not at all, minors, but in some other cases, you may not need to buy VSP for your children.
But you have.
I mean, you have to compare what VSP covers compared with this covers, and then make a decision, cause like, your VSPs.
Didn't you have a breakdown versus family versus individual?
Yeah, there is. Yeah, yours is like twenty-five, single is about nine dollars.
But now that would put Scott back to nine dollars, cause he's got jumper.
And, and.
That are covered under that.
You have to compare the VSP to this policy, you'd have to decide is it worth paying extra sixteen dollars a month? I mean, that's what it, it goes nine, yours is fourteen.
You have to take it as a group though.
Vision, VSP, I doubt it. VSP is a whole separate policy.
Okay, okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
You have to take this group policy, dental might be the same too, I'll ask Kathy, you gotta make, cause this policy doesn't cover dental. VSP, your VSP right now, I think is through Blue Cross and Shield.
That's, that, yeah, it's very different from our Blue Cross and.
I know the rates were nine, fourteen, and twenty-five, and change somewhere around there. So, really, it's a good deal, it was twenty-five. Three hundred, you know, for eyeglasses and exams and for all your kids.
Personal? But it says, what if you look on that?
Yeah, we, we'd have to compare what your VSP covers to what this covers, and figure it out, yeah, I, 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 if you guys want VSP and you wanna pay for a payroll deduction, I don't know how much fund rates will have it, but I certainly would say yes.
That was my question, did you hear what I was?
Rachel's saying, yeah, okay. The other thing I did too, that's why I go is I had Kathy print out this summary of benefits?
Yep.
And then here's, here's my recommendation, you have this, you have another understanding of your policy, your benefits, and that one. Rachel, print out these, so you have to go on real seriously. So, we hand out a copy to Sam, and Scott, and everybody else, so they see it, acknowledge it, see it, so everybody understands the insurance they're getting. I want everybody to look at it, read it, and say, okay, we, we do, we understand it. I don't want any confusion, I really don't, health insurance is confusing enough. That's why Kathy, she hunted a long time to find this.
What's the department?
Benefits? Probably the end of the month, I think, I'll ask Kathy, but, and I think that's just, we're on the same page.
They wanna go for that.
Well, this can happen pretty quick.
I just say that way, if they don't.
Nothing's changed, it's just that you have it, you've seen it, we know, we know, you've seen it, and we're on the same page. So. Is everybody okay with moving forward with that?
Yes.
Let's, let's do a voice vote, a group vote.
Do you want a motion for something?
Yeah, I'd be glad. I accept a motion to approve the health insurance, the group health insurance policy.
I would make a motion to approve the group health insurance policy with the condition that it is shopped in the marketplace.
Support. Motion by Bobby, support by court.
May I support?
I. What is that? Shop in the marketplace, I mean, that's.
Kathy asked to shop it in the marketplace. It's still, it's still a group policy, it's this policy, but I ask it go to the marketplace.
There are possible tax credits if it's bought through the shop program. It's the exact same policy. The shop program is small businesses buying in the marketplace.
Which didn't that policy qualify?
It's a form of care, but if it's not bought through that program, Kathy's.
Shop is small businesses, it's the same program.
We're, it doesn't matter.
Nothing changes here.
Right, nothing here at all changes.
We just have to make sure it's bought through the shop marketplace to qualify for tax credits. If we're just a pile, qualified for tax credit, we send in application for that about a week. Because it's another thing that nobody seems to know. But, we would hate to miss the opportunity if it's there, so, okay.
That's the only reason I don't.
Motion by Bobby?
Yeah.
Support by court.
I know what you're talking about.
Roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken, for the, for that awesome margin.
Not another year through it. Item number D, water bill, the credits we're gonna give for allowing water to run. Here's what I can tell you. Sam and I have done it, come up with close to the same number, others have done it, came up with a different number. We need to establish how many gallons of water run a day, pencil size lead. So, here's my recommendation, is everybody okay if that's how we do the credit? And once we determine what that is, if it's been, uh, these are just numbers I've taken out, we'll say it's a hundred and forty gallons a day, but we determine is the average pencil lead, that's what it runs in a day. If it's sixty days, however many gallons that is, we're paying seventy-five cents per thousand gallon. And there's a flat across the board, credit on your water bills to everybody.
Whether they, whether they ran it or not.
Unless you wanna go door to door, no, that's what I'm saying, I don't have any other way to do it to be, you know what I mean, I, I just, cause I know if we go ask everybody, yes, they all have their water up.
Later bills.
You know what I mean, I, yeah, otherwise, the only, the only way to tell if they did it is Rachel Fission goes back and looks through six hundred water bills.
You don't have a minimum billing?
Well, minimum billing's twenty-four, twenty-four.
You're gonna pay twenty-four dollars for the quarter of the water.
Yeah, then why don't you just do that?
Because then they all receive free water.
And I have to credit every.
If you're, if you give everybody a, a discount, there's still that free water.
Well, you pay, we're only gonna give them a discount, but they're, they're gonna be still paying for the water they use.
Right.
Yeah.
That twenty-four, I mean, most of us aren't gonna use that much.
Twenty-four dollars gives them zero water, they get no free water, they get all the water they use.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying, we took away the free water.
Okay.
Yeah, it's twenty-four dollars, and then you pay seventy-five cents for.
Yeah, the twenty-four dollars is like basically your hook, all right?
Yeah.
You have, you have access to.
You're just, you're gonna give them gallons then?
We're gonna, we're gonna. So, honey gallons, that pencil lead, water, so there's, the theories are still gonna pay for the water they use, it's not the water that we're asking for that water.
What is your estimate of that now?
Ken and me did it, and we both threw up with a different number. The reason why, I run a bigger sized stream than what Ken runs.
I was gonna say, you gotta, you gotta offer.
I guess what I would ask is, Rob Tyler, right there, Bill Chapman, Joe Bobby, me, the car, to run the stream of water, get back with Rachel, tell you how much you figure goes through that in twenty-four hours, and between all of our numbers, we'll come up with a common number, and say, this is what it is.
And here's my recommendation, that the chair of the water, who's Denise, or one of, whoever wants to volunteer to go down to your shop someday, I'm, I'm serious, and just, just say, that's a pencil lead, run it, truly run it into a gallon bucket, and time it and be done with it.
Wouldn't you mean that I got full water?
See, and I did, it was.
I did, it was a hundred and twelve.
Mine was one ten. I did it three times.
I, I, I. I had one, I had one gallon every six minutes.
A pencil, a pencil.
Yeah, one ga, I had one gallon every seven minutes.
Depends on where you're at, with the pressure behind everything.
Are other, are other people doing a credit like this, as trying to gain a carcass go?
Some are going back to prorate them from a year, but, you know, last year's off, last year's used. But the problem comes in that your bill.
Who do you think's the greatest credit someone would get, what's, would it be like ten dollars, or twenty, or what's the?
Six dollars, seventy-eight dollars.
Six to eight dollars, roughly.
So, we're in that. Six to eight dollars?
What do you say, Ken?
Per quart? Credit per person?
For a month?
No, that would be for probably two months, that would be two months.
We're gonna try to run it for sixty days. Because it's, it's gonna be tough.
That's really, that's really.
We could say do nothing.
The effort for the. Just call it ten bucks or something, you guys are making this really complicated.
No, we're trying to make it easy on the billing.
Ten bucks is six thousand dollars in the bill essentially.
Ten times six hundred.
That's what I'm saying, so, yeah, I mean, we're trying, what we're trying to do is just establish fair. You know, cause somebody is gonna write it on this big round. And then I guess we deal with those things, they call us and, oh my gosh.
And some aren't even going in.
How, how do we? You got how many?
I got two or five gallons.
Here's my sheet, you got one ten? How about if you and Sam get together, and just, I'm okay with that, you got two, and he got a hundred? Cause you're always gonna, it's gonna be. Or, or.
It's a difference.
Yeah, it's our thing, we're done.
Make a judgment.
Reality is here, people, we're already talking about seventy-five cents.
Yeah, seventy-five cents per thousand, right?
For that month, the difference between your number and my number is being seventy-five cents. That's reality.
That's right.
I know.
It's gonna be seventy-five cents.
That, that's reality, we're dealing with seventy-five cents.
Seventy-five cents.
Cause it's seventy-five cents per thousand.
Which would be for two months.
So, that's a lot of water for seventy-five cents.
If we say it's a hundred and fifty gallons a day, for two months, sixty days, it's six dollars and seventy-five cents. So, like, so we're gonna say it's a hundred and fifty gallons a day, once it comes off, it went on January thirty. A hundred and fifty gallons a day, incredible.
Do, do we want to do six seventy-five, or do we wanna say seven dollars, that round number for Rachel, what's gonna be easiest in the office?
We think of.
We're dealing with stats. Thirty-fifty, now a fifty-one. Okay. We just wanna, we don't wanna complicate.
So, we just want, to be done. Well, we keep talking to twenty-four, twenty-four, that changed this year, we just be twenty-four, twenty-eight.
It's not working, I just want to know everybody.
Hundred and forty, hundred, hundred fifty gallons.
I just want people to. How do you determine that? Cause you took the average.
Six dollars and seventy-five cents per.
Remember too, when we're talking.
Seventy-five cents per thousand.
No, 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 the difference between.
It's not.
This month, or this month, or this month.
Seventy-five cents per month.
See, I think it can be better, I tell you.
So, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out a way, you're, you're gonna give them a credit of six dollars and seventy-five cents?
No, we're, we're gonna give them a credit of a hundred and fifty ga.
Gals per day.
Per day.
Per day.
Yeah.
Whatever that turns out to be.
Whatever it turns out to be, yeah.
However many days.
A hundred and fifty gallons.
Has a value.
Yeah. Everybody good on it? Okay, fine, I, I take a motion to credit one hundred and fifty gallons per day. Support motion by Chapman, support by Bobby, all in favor?
Aye.
And that is fair, that is fair, people.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Item number E, the DDA would like us to appoint Kelly Young to the DDA board. Motion by Chapman, support by fair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. F, we're gonna move on real fast on this one, because it's been long, and I'm okay. Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we have a diagram, we talked about blader, misused disorders, abandoned vehicles. Basically, in a nutshell, we need to let him know what we want, right?
Correct.
We can enforce it like we talked about, so we force it, it's not gonna be a difficult thing, right? So, at the same time tonight, look at noxious weeds, look at, come back next month, and, and, but, but, like noxious weeds, it gets, it gets as, Brian Graham, we're pretty much writing us anything we want that's legal. Do we wanna say, we're only gonna enforce the noxious weed ordinance on homes of residents? He needs to know what to write, we have to give him a parameter to write it in. Same way with abandoned vehicles, if you wanna take this up for thirty days, fine, it's thirty days. Unsafe structure, I think, was pretty clear, right? He will write us an unsafe structure ordinance based on state statute. That would be enforced on all unsafe structures, once we determine they're unsafe.
We're, so, as you and I talked here last night, for a minute, we're not, we can't define what is noxious weed, what is, uh, whatever. They're, that's already defined by state statute, we're noxious weed. We are defining the areas and how we enforce that.
Right, and we'll come up with a perfect one, but we should come up with something, and we all feel it's fair, and Scott feels it's enforceable, because we just know we can't go around town, cut all the grass in the village, subways, or regions, it's all, it's just, our villages been set up that way. Just move down the road.
You gotta remember, we're gonna enforce on our own side.
And, and, and Brian tells you, there, there's discretion in everything that we, we need, we need something, you know what I mean?
So, we could. Our organs to exempt the villagers, et cetera, like.
We don't, we don't have to do it at all. You know, we don't necessarily have to do it, we just say, okay, we don't wanna do it, we don't have to. But, then let's throw it out, is what I'm saying, that's what Scott's had, let's, I think we need it, uh, don't get me wrong, I'm just saying, a council decision, so next, but, actually, make, make, write some stuff down, maybe less, next month, so we can truly make a decision, pass one, Brian, write it up.
That's enforceable at fifty-two hours, I mean, technically, I could spend it one hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah, and the prime ordinance, that's what I'm, we want to be able to make it, something you're comfortable with, and.
I mean, that's, that's the reality. We held that public meeting, it's not just for, and had a very, very minimal turnout. So, does that say that people are perfectly happy with what we have, or that they just don't care what we have?
Well, they don't know what we have, cause if we enforce what we have, they would be just screaming, that's what I'm saying, it's gotta be.
Yeah, they'd have been in your.
It's gotta be, it, it, it needs to be something that's fair in everybody's eyes, and enforceable, and I think, I, I think, I think we'll move along just fine, same with abandoned vehicles and.
Like you said, if you truly enforce the ordinance we have, and we have the manpower to do it.
The hanging tree would be.
Well.
We don't, we don't have. We'll make it better than.
Yeah, we have a mature, you know, encourage people to.
Okay.
You want to be in my relationship.
Yeah, I think most people will.
So, you.
That's a big part. The ordinance would give you a tool to use to enforce.
It already does, but the question is, I mean, it's what we have a meeting for, is to find out where's the priority here. Like I said, do you want me to spend one hundred percent of my time doing ordinances then?
Well, yeah, I think another community says, if there's a complaint, flush.
Sure, that's kind of how we, see, and I, I.
That's pretty much the way it's always been here too, is if.
I guess the hard thing with that is you're picking neighbor against neighbor. I mean.
Well, I get it, it's, it's not a.
It's not, you could also, you could do like other, like, do, just have somebody else do it, I mean, you kinda start niggling all the jobs for one person to do. I mean, I hope you're a chief of police, and the only police officer that's full-time, and the zoning guy, and the, the ordinance divorce guy, it kinda thins things out really. It's kinda hard to do it. But, you know, I'll sit here and tell you that I totally agree with it, and there's a purpose for it, and there's a reason for it, but, you know, it's kinda hard to, you know, decide what, and it's, it's what you guys want, you guys are right there with the title, so, my job is to enforce it.
And now we're stuck with the past due, that we had no public input, so we just move forward. That's mine.
I think it's easier to approach these.
Okay, we'll move on to open this, we'll event permit, Rob, you want to?
Yeah, I just drew up a draft here, um, just for everybody to critique, add, remove, whatever you think. Just kinda took some things and put them together, and approved the, the applications, the template that Ken gave me. Tried to move it into PDF form, I can't do it at home or at work, so, Joe told me that Rachel could do it with no problem here. PDF.
Rachel, bring yours in there.
Rachel, you said she.
I said, I said she's done other documents for us.
I wrote a PDF, I'll amend it, it's no big deal. But, um, I probably should give one of these to Scott, too, while we're going, since we decided, but, if anybody wants me to read it, I can read it, but if not, we have it.
I've already read it.
I think most of it is pretty clear, there's a few things that I would, I'd say like one that doesn't, and the description on the front page doesn't say anything about us assessing the, um, uh, insurance cost or something like that, if we wanna do, it says it on the permit, but it doesn't say, then that's fine, so just some little things like that, I think would be.
I'm just trying to set, set something, you know, kinda ground to go off of, and then. That's pretty simple.
I don't know, for the most part, we read it, read it pretty well.
I, I'm finding that definition of special event is how it's.
I mean, like Scott, a special event's an event whether held indoors, outdoors, that is held on public property or streets, that can reasonably be expected to cause a public gathering and is not a part of the normal course of business at a location.
Yep. Scott, did you see that?
I, I think.
I've got a next one right here. I think it's you, John.
The purpose of a special event is protect the health, safety, and public welfare, generally.
I thought it was pretty good, like I said.
Jake didn't.
I just didn't, didn't like, I see what you're doing, while you're.
Sure.
There's something that we wanna put on that.
What you said, protect the, protect the health, safety, and what?
The health, safety, and public welfare, the general. Yeah, like I said, it's just a draft, it's not finalized. I'd like to get everybody's opinion, and then Joe and Rob and I are on the Communication Committee, we'll look at it, we'll put something together, maybe that was.
We're very well.
You and Joe and I are.
We're trying to get out there now. You're on three, you're on three of them.
Public comment?
Well, do we, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to say, let's move forward, whereas.
Why, you're on the.
I'm, I'm enforcing this as our special event.
Do you, do you think we should put on the description that we can, um, make them acquire insurance?
The term, yes, it will change some wording, it says by the city manager, the filing of a certificate of insurance coverage, blah, 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 blah.
Let me see. Oh, and that's what, that's what I say.
That's just the definition of a special event.